The Zeebo doesn't have all the stocks on it. I'm still trying to get some extra ones.
We can do the, we can do the conce- well, I can tell the girls are set up on a good amount. It'll work, don't you? Because that's super cheap. Whatever we want to.
Oh, but don't you have some music, Chris?
What?
You have some music.
Yeah, Sarah and, um, Donna.
Sharon and Nikki Zeebo?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Well, we'll see what they do in the Zeebo.
But I guess we could move the table if they end up there. So I was thinking it'd be nice for them to just be set up.
And have the table out. Yeah.
And, uh, Ryan said she had some Irish lines to go on.
Do I need to make it bigger? No. I've got my ring glasses on. That's really about all I, about what I need.
Good evening. It's September 29th, 2025, 5:00 PM Central Time. I call to order the meeting of the Montego City Mayor and Alderman. We'll start with our prayer. Chapin?
Let us pray. Divine and loving God, we gather for the town council meeting seeking your blessings for our community. We ask for guidance for our leaders, strength for our first responders, and peace for all citizens who call this town home. For our town leaders, grant them wisdom and discernment in their decisions that they may serve with integrity and humility. Help them to listen to the voices of all community members and to pursue the common good. Strengthen them for the responsibilities they carry and guide them towards just and effective governance. For our first responders, we pray for the safety and protection of our police, fire, and emergency medical personnel who selflessly face danger to keep us safe. Bless them with courage and clarity in difficult situations. Watch over their families who support them in their service and bring them all home safely. For the citizens of Montego, we ask for peace and unity throughout our community so that we may treat one another with kindness and respect. Inspire us to come together to resolve issues and to build a vibrant, supportive town for all. Grant our community prosperity and good health so that every resident can flourish. May our efforts reflect your love for all and may Montego be a place of hope and harmony. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dean?
President?
Uh, Grant?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Nate?
Here.
Here. Okay. You've received the minutes in your packet. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes submitted.
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Is it, oh. You've also received minutes of the public hearing held August 25th. That was in your packet. I'll accept a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or correction on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Okay, is that it for minutes? Just a few brief comments before we get started. Fresh mess ends in October. I think it's this week or next, but it'll be ending soon. Um, well, we'll be hearing about poker run in Halloween, I guess, later on in the meeting. October 27th is the next meeting. October 7th is the planning commission meeting at 4:00 PM. And I'll hold other comments until then. Citizen comments? Any citizen wish to be heard? Yes?
I posted a post on Facebook. If anybody had any questions or anything they wanted me to ask, I would ask. One of the things that I got was to thank the first responders for everything they did, so I will. I got a message from a lady on Laurel Lake Drive. She says she has six streetlights out from cemetery to Ridge Cliff. Been reported several times. They've been out for over two years. It makes traveling this road at night with fog impossible to see. With fall weather beginning, we would appreciate considering contacting Squatchy Valley. I contacted them, reporting the streetlights, but they cannot do anything till Montego officials report it. Also, several missing reflectors on the road. I have a complaint about the man in the blue van sitting at the park all the time.
Wait, may I interrupt for one minute? Where were those lights from? Where?
Laurel Lake Drive to Cemetery to Ridge Cliff.
And are they Squatchy lights?
Yes. Don't take that away from my three minutes.
No, I'm just trying to keep track of things. Thank you.
The man in the van, I came through town the other day and he's sitting at the park. And there is a lady there with her child on the swing. So I turned around and I went back and just sat and watched. The man has what I consider everything in his van out on the picnic table. He's sitting there with no shirt, camouflage shorts and flip flops. And he is looking in this lady's direction the whole time that we're sitting there. I don't know if he's looking at her, but I would have felt very uncomfortable being her. She stayed for about 10 minutes after I got there, then she left. The next day, I went to the park to decorate and he is there again. Same outfit, same setup on the picnic table. Except this time he's got a grill and he's probably got a 12-inch flame going on top of the picnic table where he's cooking something to eat. I know you can't do anything about it and I can't ask Rayline to do anything about it during the meeting. I know it's a city park. I know he's a free man, but if you guys ever go through there and there's nobody at the park and you wonder why, you know, he needs to find somewhere else to go or something. Also, we have a mountain garden club now. They met a couple of times. They had a good plant swap last month. They've got a couple of things planned this coming month. They've also got a Facebook page, Mountain Garden Club. If you have any questions, you can get on that or you can send me a message, whatever. Bingo is starting back up in October and going good.
Thank you. During a few, and Martha and I would get together on that garden club. I'd appreciate it for coordination. You had something?
Yes. First, that's a garden club that's separate from beautification. It's a group of people on the plateau, right? That have gotten together and anybody who wants to can join that. So they're not working with us on anything with beautification.
Well, so there's no duplication of area of operation?
No, no, because I'm going to the meeting, so.
Oh, fine. Thank you.
Um, but the reason I wanted to say something is I'm concerned about the cemetery on Laurel Lake. Um, Carol and Bill Bennett have been taking care of it for years and, um, Bill can barely walk and should not be out there measuring where graves go. Plus Carol said that they're almost out of space. And, um, the cemetery is run by a volunteer organization. But it's called the Montego Cemetery Association. But the town apparently has nothing to do with it. And that bothers me. I think the town should oversee it and Carol and Bill agree with me. I mean, they're worn out. They've just about run out of energy.
So are they mowing it with private donations then?
Uh, no, the mowing is paid for by, you know, people pay to have a plot there. And that is in the bank. And then when it needs to be mowed, they use that money.
That was my understanding, that it's, uh, it's maybe in the town of Montego, but it's run by a private organization?
Yes, it is.
I'll look into that with you and talk to the Bennetts. Because we have helped from time to time as a town in hauling after a storm, trimming a tree, removing a tree. We've done what we could when requested by whoever is operating it. If it needs a more formal thing, we'll bring it to the.
Yeah, Carol said nobody else is really doing anything but them.
Is there still an organization?
Still an organization. But you know how volunteer organizations are.
Yes, I do.
Do you know if they're a 501(c) or not?
They are not.
See, the, most of the money that they get is from interment fees.
Okay, that's, yeah.
If they bought their lot in 1950 for $5.
That's all they pay.
When they open a grave, everyone has to pay the $200 interment fee.
Hmm, okay.
And, and several cemeteries locally have started doing that. One in Pelham, I think, has gone up to like $400 interment fee in addition to the opening and closing or whatever. And the problem with the rural cemeteries is with cremation rate at about 50% or so, you're not having as many standard burials as you used to have. And Montego's the same way. We used to have 30 to 40 interments a year at Montego. Now about 10 now.
Yeah. So the income is not as much as.
But other communities have had this problem in years past. Uh, for instance, Cowan, Cowan Montgomery Cemetery is on the left as you go through. If you look over, you can see it off the road. Uh, the town took it over several years ago. They're in charge of the mapping. You have to contact them for an interment order. Uh, over at Deckard, Mount Garner is a big cemetery there, right there by Deckard City Hall. They've done that. And many other cities the size of Deckard, Cowan. Uh, the city has had to take over the cemetery because of the reasons you have stated.
And, uh. Well, and your mapping comment is the other thing. Um, I think a lot of you know that the Bennett's house burned two years ago. And, um, all of his records burned. So he has had to recreate us in the last two years.
But at some point in time, there's going to be no one to look after.
That's right. That's right.
And, and, and my feeling is, uh, other communities have already bitten that bullet. And, and, uh, Montego should take care of our cemetery where our former residents are buried. Uh, and, and, you know, people like me have been here all your life. If you want to visit your friends, you got to go out to Montego Cemetery or up to Center City.
Okay. We'll look into that and get some history from Dean as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizen?
Good evening. I just wanted to ask if there's been any further discussion or any solution to the fence on East Main?
There's a workshop on that tomorrow at 4:00.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other citizen wish to be heard at this time? Thank you. Let's move on. I gave you calendar events and all that. Are you okay? Travis, you all right? Police Department?
Good afternoon, councilmen, citizens of Montego. Uh, let me address the, um, security that we've got going on. Actually, it was going to actually start that last month if the wand didn't come in. In light of recent events and what's going on in our world today, um, I just felt it necessary. I got with, uh, the mayor and to ensure, or to be better ensured, that the citizens of Montego, the visitors and the councilmen are protected. I decided to wand it. So that's the reason for that, okay? I know it's not convenient. Um, I know it's not normal. You know, it's, it's not normal, but things are happening in the world today that's not normal. So, um, I feel that it's better to adjust as opposed to us having an event that would happen and me say, you know, I did everything I could and really I didn't. So just wanted to address that.
One thing that came out that is covered by TCA because I know from my prior experiences, there are certain areas and venues that you cannot take a weapon.
Yes, sir. You're correct.
And what does TCA say about that?
So basically, um, it's actually on the board out front. I'm not going to be able to cite it offhand, okay? Um, but any government building, um, school or any place that has no firearms carried with the TCA underneath it, only law enforcement officers are able to carry a weapon in there. So if you've noticed all the way around this building, um, we had that on the, on the entrances. So, um, and that's the reason there.
I don't have a problem with that. I do have questions about, uh, wanding people coming in. I mean, if someone wants to do bodily harm to me, would they just not wait till I came out of the parking lot?
Well, they could, but do you want me to put a sniper on the roof?
Well, it hasn't worked out real well on the federal level here, lady.
Correct.
That's where the shooters are, is on the.
Correct. But at the end of the day, it's my job to make sure that the individual sitting behind the bullpen that can't get out of the room quicker than everyone else is protected. So therefore, as long as I'm chief, I'll do that.
Well, and I respect you, uh, your position for saying that. But for me, it kind of sends a message. Uh, I, I mean, I don't have any fear of anybody I see out there in the audience who's doing the bodily harm. Uh, and I think it's just, uh, it's really something that's done. I mean, I see no good reason, uh, are you going to do it at City Court?
We are. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You going to be here tomorrow afternoon for, uh, the workshop? That's a public.
If we need to be, absolutely.
Well, what would be the difference?
Yeah, I mean.
You going to be here at Planning Commission next Tuesday?
Absolutely.
Nobody on overtime, I hope.
I can't promise you that.
Well, maybe I can here in a few minutes. We'll see what the council wants to do on that. So, thank you.
Can I continue? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would say the concerns that have been expressed to me are around equal enforcement. So I will defer to your judgment on this. And I was happily wanded on my way in as long as we're, as long as we're, we're not using it as an intimidation tactic to keep certain people out. I mean, I'm just as likely to get mad at him and bring a weapon, so I probably need to.
100%. And I, and I thought about all these. I really did. Um, but then at the, at the end of the day, I don't have the luxury of not taking, you know, these steps. What if? I have to think about what could happen. You know, that's my responsibility for safety. You know, um, and at the end of the day, not everyone's going to like it. I mean, they really aren't. I mean, would I love for us to go back to the 80s and 90 era? Absolutely. Probably the best times ever, ever. But unfortunately, we can't, you know? Um, and everyone does carry a gun. And will this ever happen in Montego? God, I hope not. But can I be sure that it won't? No.
I, I do, to Dean's point, have some concern about personnel costs associated with it. So if you feel like it's something that we need to do on a regular basis, we might just consider having, having a remote there that people walk through.
That would be great.
I don't know what, I don't know what they cost, so, so there's going to be a cost benefit analysis to it, but.
We could get a grant for it, but at the end of the day, this is less invasive than actually touching people. Don't want to touch people. This is, go around, you got keys in your pocket, you got a phone, that's fine. But we all know you can put a, you can, you can put a gun down here, you can put a gun in your back. I mean, there's places you can put guns.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. All right, let's go over the report here. I'll just go down the line. Um, we had one driving on revoke. We had three DUIs. We had one aggravated assault. We had one simple assault. We had two domestics. We had three drug-related arrests. We had one identity theft. We wrote 47 warnings with eight citations. Our call volume was up. It was 405, up from last month at 352. Um, crashes were up from 10 to 13. The three that were up were in the pilot parking lot. Um, we did 56 traffic stops. We had one runaway juvenile of which we were able to find in a very quick manner and return her back to, um, her parents. And of course, we have one missing person of which, um, I'm going to go over. Um, on the Montego Facebook page, um, the Montego Police Department Facebook page, um, there is a updated picture of Mr. Richard Barnhill. Um, he's a missing, um, elder man, last seen, um, at a location. And, um, we called TBI in. We had our district attorney come in and we did a extensive search, probably 4.2 miles of an area. Um, he is missing at this point because, um, we can't find the body. So with the information that we've, we've gathered along with TBI, um, this, there's foul play involved here. So we will continue our efforts. Um, and we're getting leads, you know, weekly about this. So hopefully we'll be able to, um, locate him and return him back to his family. So, uh, his family, um, they were up last week. Spoke to them. They got some of his belongings. So as of right now, um, he is missing. I can't, um, say otherwise until we can actually find, um, his remains. So we've got that. Also, we've got more scams going on. If you receive a call from an investment company, a call that says, "Hey, I work for Jane Doe Investment Firms. I would like for you to invest yada, 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 yada." Um, there's a scam going around for that. Don't fall into the trap. If you are going to want to invest, call around, talk to some local investors or whatever, because most of the time, a reputable investor is not going to call your home. You're going to go to them. Um, we also have what is called phishing. So, and it, I give them quite frequently myself. It'll be a number that says, "Hey, how are you doing?" You know, um, you know, this is so-and-so. And they're wanting you to respond back, um, with, and they'll engage you in conversation. And next thing you know, you've given, um, um, some information that you probably shouldn't have given and, you know, your identity can be stolen. Um, that is, that is definitely going out. Um, also, the, the scam for the, um, tag reader, um, you, you went through a toll booth. You got to pay X amount of dollars. That's still generating around. Please don't pay that. Um, we did have a gentleman come up today who actually was in a location. He, he did actually get a citation in the mail and it, it was legit. Um, if you don't receive anything certified from whatever state it is, it, I wouldn't even respond back to it. Especially I wouldn't respond back to, um, it through text message. Um, other than that, I, I have had some concerns. Um, citizens asking me, um, there are some property here that's, um, need to be kept up better. Um, I'll get with the ordinance department on that. Um, this was just brought to my attention a few days ago. That's why it's not in, in this packet here. So I'll get with AJ and he and I will try to figure out that as well.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, sir. Uh, last, I believe it was last month, we talked about a record list and you were working on, on that. Has that been completed?
Completed. There's three on it. Yes, sir.
Okay. So the council can have a copy of it?
Oh, 100%.
Policy, the city's policy in regard to.
Yes, sir.
The record calls?
Yes, sir.
Will it be on the website as well or is that something?
I don't, I don't have a website, no, but.
I mean, as far as the city's website, is that something?
I can, I can produce it for you and if, if they want to put it on the city website, that's, that's.
I'd just like to have a copy of it. I don't.
I will give each one of you a copy of it, yes.
I had a question about radars. We talked about those last month. I thought we were going to get a proposal for those today. That what we talked about last month?
You're talking about, so, um, we're not really a proposal. So we're waiting for the THSO grant to kick in. Um, we should be receiving the funds probably in the next two weeks. And we were going to buy four of those out of that THSO fund. Um, we're going to put those four in vehicles and then we'll go from there. And then I will write up something, um, for you guys later. But I want to make sure the four that we're getting are actually going to be utilized and utilized the way they're supposed to be as opposed to buying eight or seven and putting them in cars and them not being utilized the way they need to be utilized.
We have to have a training, specific training for each officer to.
Correct. Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, one other thing. We talked about, uh, a couple of months ago on body cams. Uh, for the officers, we were short three, I think you said?
We were short three. Um, an individual from the town reached out to me. Um, I spoke with him today. I've got to speak with him tomorrow. So, um, he wanted to know what the costs for the three were. Um, it's $15,000 for three. So, um, that's, that's what the cost is. So I'll speak with this individual tomorrow and we'll go from there. And I'll let the mayor know and he can let you guys know where I can bring it up at the next meeting.
And we, we have a, a policy in regards to body cam? Uh, is that state mandated or?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Um, our policy, um, it's actually, we have one of the better ones through Motorola. Got Axon Motorola. Um, we can't delete anything in our, our evidence at all. We have, we do not have that ability. The evidence lasts for, I want to say, seven years. After seven years, it disappears unless I upload it on a thumb drive and put it in the evidence locker. And the only reason I would do that is if it was, um, a heinous crime, one or an unsolved crime.
Is that a matter of public record, uh, for citizens to get copies of? You see in Nashville where they have problems, well, it's not a problem, I guess. During an investigation, they withhold them and then after that investigation's over, uh, they can release them?
Absolutely. So yes, there's a form that, that the individual fill out, the Florida form. They would come fill it out, put their, um, um, email address there and we would email it on a secure site to that person. But they have to come in, they have to fill out the form, um, so that I can keep it on file.
Is there a charge for that?
There's not a charge. Only if I had to download it on a thumb drive. So.
And a follow-up on the question about cameras on the Mountain Go Trail. So we have, uh, the Mountain Go Trail Alliance has signed a contract to do a cloud-based camera system.
Fantastic.
That will use AI to automatically send you a message when it detects something that is illegal. So we'll need to, once that system gets up, we'll need to get with you and with, um, the chief in Tracy City and figure out how the best way to get that, have that notification set up.
Fabulous.
In closing, let me make two quick comments.
What's the update on the vehicles?
Yes, sir.
Is there more?
So the vehicles have been ordered. Um, they're at the Strobes R Us to, um, be installed. However, the lights are on back order, so we may have them the end of this month, the beginning of next month. So I spoke with him last Wednesday, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on two quick items. I've been receiving information about these scams and phishing and all that. The best information is don't do anything except call the institution that sent it to you directly because, um, there's just too much out there, including robo-calls, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I appreciate your efforts on that, but your advice is sound. Just call the institution directly. Just call the institution directly. Okay. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, folks, we're gonna be doing a fundraiser. We're gonna be selling ping pong ball guns, rubber bang guns, and slingshots up back. Appreciate you.
It better be plastic, and they won't make it in.
So we've had twenty-nine calls for the month of September. The frontline engine's been repaired and back in service. The generator motor's still out on that. The company was gonna come back and look at it, but I think we may be able to take a look at it in-house and see if we can come up with something to fix it. All the grant items are in, this is that 2023 CBDG grant, or CBDG grant that I keep talking about. Everything's in besides two trucks. And they're, they're at the outfitters. About four weeks ago, the fellow told me that'd be about four to six weeks, they should be done. I think, where's that place at? Wilson County Motors is where we started, and I have no idea where they've, where they've shipped it out. It's in my email. But anyway, that's the two pickup trucks. Once that's here, that grant should be allowed to be closed. I actually talked to Set D today and talked to Stacy Willoughby and answered some questions for her. So hopefully, I think we've got an invoice for the city that, that we at least find to pay for loose equipment, so. Members are continuing to do their fire, their monthly fire training. A few of them's also taken off and went to state classes and certifications this last month. AJ was one of those guys to get a re-cert. Had a few guys go to a big multi-agency event in Foster Falls that we was invited to. So we're still moving around with that. The annual SCBA's and the mask inspection's been done and recertified to meet the NFPA required. Annual pump test for each apparatus is coming up. Within probably the next few weeks, we'll try to get those knocked out. We'll do all that in-house, so it doesn't cost anything from a vendor. That's about all I have for fire. It's kinda been hit and miss and in and out.
On the pump test, you're certified to conduct that?
Yes.
You personally?
It's not a certification as much as it's documentation.
Fine.
Yep, so it'll be documented in-house.
And so the ladder truck, does it, does it exist?
Why'd you do this? Nothing, I mean, so Bradley was the group that was working on the frontline engine. I kinda picked one, the frontline, the head mechanic was down a couple days. I actually talked to him about it. It's all going back together. So he did tell me, he said, this is like the worst project that I've ever done. He said, all the, all the lines, the fittings and everything is interior of that square boom. It's basically a crane that slid apart, and they had to redo all the hydraulic lines on the inside of that, that casing. So everything was built by hand. The cylinders had to be repacked at a third party. He said it was a very tedious project.
Have we paid them any?
Still on budget?
I know two years ago, we, we.
We were not to exceed twenty-five thousand, I think is what we voted on.
I mean, I don't know.
Have we paid them anything to date?
No, they're charging a storage fee. I'm good with the Jacksons.
No, there's nothing, there are no charges yet.
There's nothing going out, no. Any questions for fire, other than the?
Fire hydrants, before we had discussed about, is that something the fire department was gonna do on, on, like, painting them and wetting around on them?
Yes, yes, yes.
Or was that a city?
So we actually got the, the tool to repair the fire hydrants. If you remember last month, I think it was like a two thousand dollar tool. Finally, to work on the fire hydrants down inside the ground, in the barrel, they call it. A lot of those hydrants, AJ and I, Kevin Gillum's able to actually go in there and redo them and save us a bit of money. So that's our whole goal on it. The annual, you know, exercise and painting and inspection of them, that's, that's an annual thing. Every five years, we flow them for, for the NFPA fire, the flow tests on them. I think we're twenty-two is when, when the last flows were done and recorded by Rogers Hydrant Service. So that's up in twenty-two. So I'll probably talk to you about that on budget time and see where you guys wanna go with that.
So we had talked, when we did it in twenty-two, we had talked about doing a certain number of them every year so we could move it in-house and avoid the external charge.
That was my initial goal. And then when we was, when we had the ISO grading, when the ISO gentleman come through and talked to me, it had to be a, we can do that, but in order to achieve full accreditation on the points for the ISO, it had to be a company, basically not a contract, but a schedule that was verifiable. Rogers Hydrant Services had that. So that's where they got, you know, we threw that under the bus for that, at that time. It can change, though, it doesn't have to be that way. It can change. It's just records-keeping and data entry and all that stuff for the, for the hydrants. My ultimate dream is, yes, we need to, we need to quadrant the city and, just like we've done in the, in the big full-time fire world, and go out and flow hydrants, so.
What about your medical health team?
Medical team's going good, Dean. We've got, what, we have four of us that's taken the National Registry for our license. Four of us has gotten our license. Those guys are actually responding and running calls. Mayor and I has a meeting with, with Stacy Hetson on Wednesday to talk about a memo of understanding. And that's all the insurance and liabilities and stuff from EMS, because we're working on Dr. EMS's protocol stuff. Get dispatch protocol and how we're gonna handle it and what we're gonna, what we're gonna respond to. Kind of just the operations side of it, how we're gonna respond. So that's coming a long way. Yes, sir.
Building?
Good. Building inspection, six, six building inspections has been done. Two certs of occupancies completed. The Mountain Inn case was brought to city court on September the twenty-fifth. Judge Rains issued a continuance until November the twentieth. There's a couple disputes in there that we're going back and forth with in the court. On the court matter, I don't really wanna disclose until we get further on it, see where we're at with it. But know that Judge Rains understands the full case and some paperwork was presented in court. And that's under review, and he has some more paperwork to, to, to get for me to review, to bring back to Judge Rains. So that's still an open, open concept. And we're working on the fence project on Main Street. It's under review by the town as well as the city attorney. So that's where I'm at with that.
And the workshop's tomorrow?
Yeah, workshop tomorrow.
Anything on buildings? Okay, thank you, Travis.
For code enforcement, we're working on a commercial sign in a residential yard. We're working with that, get that remediated. Food trucks, we're going through all the food trucks that we got now, the permits. Look and see if they're still coming to town, if they are. Check them with city hall's records, getting updated permits for them. If they don't have them, then we're going, going, talking to them and getting updated permits for the files. And then Winston Avenue and the cemetery, we're still working with that. We got two residential's on that that's probably already gone to court. And we'll see what we can do with, with the court case with that. Try to get that cleaned up for good. And we'll talk to Rayline and get the properties that he's talking about as well. We'll get that going and see what we can go with them.
On the food truck thing, are we, is there any, since this is the first year, we're really tightening up on that with the, with the permits coming every January stuff? Is there any grace period for any of the food trucks for, for these next couple of months?
So that's what we've talked about, and we're gonna try to get with mayor and see how I wanna do that. Because you know, like you mentioned, it goes January one till January one. So it kinda, it sucks to go towards the end of the year and do it. So we're just trying to get files together, and we're gonna go from there. I'm sure we can talk with y'all as well and see what maybe we can do to try and make it as fair as we can across the board, not undercut some people and overcut some more. So it's just with the high intake, you know, we've got two new food trucks coming in with seafood. The pizza truck stuff, they've got, they have a permit. Barbecue truck, they got permits, we're updating them. And we've got all these other new trucks coming in that we're gonna get permits for and get them, get them going as well.
All right, thanks. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't mind a grace period for this, since we're just implementing this new, this new system. But certainly after that, at the years following, a grace period should go away. If somebody opens up a food truck in November, it's kinda tough luck.
That's where, that's where we're at with that, with the new ordinance and the updated, all the new food trucks coming in, the amount that we got coming in, we're trying to get it all straightened out and stuff with that new ordinance.
All right, thanks.
Yep, thank y'all.
Streets Department, there's nothing parks in wrecked. We can cover with beautification. Planning Commission, we'll see who submits site plans. The meeting for September was canceled because there was nothing on the agenda and nothing for the planner to review for us. So let's do, Martha Anne, let's do beautification.
First, I want to publicly thank a number of people who have helped with decorations for the fall. Doreen Parmley and her daughter or niece? Niece. Her niece made all those cute little stands. And Doreen has put them up. And then David Manning, Linda Brookhart, and my husband put all the corn stalks out and, and the ribbons. So I just wanna thank them for all that help. We are looking at Christmas already. We've got to get ready for the Christmas, the tree trail. And I want to encourage everyone in town to do a tree. You can do a personal tree, a church tree, a business tree. You could do one in honor of your pet or pets. I mean, there are lots of different things you could do at Christmas tree. We wanna have a big, long tree trail, and it's gonna be in the greenway. So look for the information on that. We're also looking at doing a mural on the side of the fire hall. Travis left, but he knows about it. And Keith Kilibrue is gonna give us some ideas to look at. And we're hoping it's gonna have some history. We're looking to put some Montegoal history in, in it there. So Keith is the one who's done the murals over in Tracy City. So you can see his work, he does a wonderful job.
Excuse me for a minute.
Yes.
Alderman, is there need for any action on that? Seems to be privately funded and it'll be on a city building, that's the only reason I raise it. Do you have any comments?
I'll address that and the Imagine Montegoal report, so we can talk about it.
Fine, thank you.
Okay. And the last thing, at the last meeting, we had a visit from a man who, he and his wife have taken on a project of communication boards for autistic and nonverbal children. So at the next meeting, I'm gonna bring the Alderman and the mayor a proposal on purchasing several of those boards for our parks. Any questions?
Any questions, we'll forget. Thank you, Doreen, for once again doing the parks and the gazebo.
And thank you, Martha Anne, for all your work, your goods, all over the place.
Volunteer of the year.
Okay, Imagine Montegoal's next.
Yeah, a couple things. There is the, mostly out of the tourism group, but including several other, other people in the steering committee for Imagine Montegoal. We have come up with a new logo that we would like for the, I assume the city needs to adopt this, or they can or can't adopt this. But it's a new logo that we'll be using for all the Imagine Montegoal events. I would love for the city to adopt this as, as the logo for the city. You can decide whether you wanna put it on letterhead or anything like that later. But, but at least adoption by the city would actually, and maybe putting it on the website, would kinda tie everything together with the tourism component and the beautification component and all of the Imagine Montegoal things. So this is the logo that we're talking about, that we've come up with. It does incorporate the, some, some of the old logo, we just kinda changed the eagle on the top. It could just give it a little bit of a fresh look. So I would, I would like to, actually, I'd like to make a motion, if you think it's appropriate, make a motion for the city to adopt this logo as our, as our logo, which ties into city events and also Imagine Montegoal events, so.
It's a motion from a committee, does not need a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
What is the motion again?
For the city of Montegoal, or the town of Montegoal to adopt this as their logo.
Are you including the logo use policy as well?
That would be, we can talk about that, we can adopt it all together if you want, or we can discuss them separately?
Yeah, I would prefer separate.
Okay. So this will be adopting the logo. There's a, what Dean's referring to, there's a policy that we felt like we needed to write around the use of the logo. So, yeah, which is up here, which we can talk about separately, whether, whether that needs to get adopted or not. But let's start with the logos. Everybody, does anybody have a second on, on the logo itself?
Does it need a second as a committee? Is there any discussion on the motion?
Is, is this for the town only, or does this go on water and sewer vehicles as well? Is this, or have we thought that far? Does it matter?
We have not thought that far. Not really sure that that matters. We certainly don't wanna spend a lot of money repainting vehicles and things. But I would, I think by adopting this, anything that we move, anything that comes in the future that would, that would have a logo, whether it's a vehicle or anything else, then it would, then we would be using this just for consistency.
Any other discussion on the motion?
How does it relate to the shield? Or do we wanna talk about that separately?
Talk about that separately.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, there's your logo, next.
Okay, great. And if we could, like, love to see this get pushed onto the website as well. So this is the second piece of kind of a logo or a tourism marketing piece. We started off by trying to make this our logo and realized that really a patch is not a logo. So we, we came up with the other. This is going to be something that will be used, can be used by either city businesses or, or any kind of event, church or anything like that, that as just a, another, yet another marketing tool for the city. I see this more as bumper stickers and stickers, or hat patch, or maybe even t-shirts on the back or pocket or something. You'll see that it kind of incorporates the same thing that we just voted on for the logo in terms of the eagle and the way the name is, is framed and fonted. So this is more fun. And this would also fall within the policy that we'll discuss in just a minute. But this is, this is not an official adoption necessarily for the city. I don't, I don't believe so. So this is just for everybody's notice. And hopefully, we, I've talked to a couple vendors already around town that sell Montegoal swag. And we'll see about them getting, or ordering, their next set of ordering, start, see if they'll incorporate some of this onto their merchandise. The logo use policy, so as I said, we, we felt like we needed a policy to have a little bit of control with the, with the logo. They're, we're trying to avoid some instances where the logo could be used for something that the city doesn't wanna be represented by or with, so. And so what we came up with is, we decided that we should get a storefront that kinda controls the files for the logo. And we chose a local vendor here who helped us do this. It's Big A Marketing. Some of you all know Aaron over at Big A Marketing. That he would be the, he would be a storefront. And any, any vendor, whether that's city, tourism, or event planner or business that wants to use the logo, they would have to go through him to get the vector file, which is the actual electronic file of the logo. And then there would be a quick approval process initially by him. Secondly, if there's any kind of controversy or, or question mark, it would go to the Imagine Montegoal Steering Committee, and then ultimately to the city council if we felt like it needed to go that far for some kind of approval. And that just gives us a little bit of control over it. One of the things that you'll notice here in the fees and revenues, there'd be no fee for using this with anybody with the official representative of the town. So anytime the town of Montegoal uses it, since we basically own it, that would include tourism, beautification, economic development, the subcommittees and things of Imagine Montegoal. There would be no charge for this, and Aaron would just design whatever we're looking for, and they would, and there would be no fee. For an outside vendor to use this, we would, there would be a five percent charge. So you'd go to, if you're a vendor and you wanted to get some swag, you wanna get some t-shirts made, you would go to Aaron, or you go to Big A Marketing and, you know, place your order, design, design whatever your, whatever the merchandise should be, place your order. And that wholesale price that Aaron would charge you would have a five percent tag on for it. That money then would be, every quarter, Aaron would send the city a check for that amount, all the five percent of, all the products that he produces for anybody. And that would go directly, we would allocate that five percent. This is not a lot of money, what we're, what we're talking about. But that five percent would go, would be pushed towards a specific. we're talking about, but that 5% would go, would be pushed towards a specific fund within the Mont Eagle budget that I'm going to probably talk about next month. But it would basically go to tourism, beautification, and/or Imagine Mont Eagle initiatives. So it's just a way for us to, again, a little bit of control over it, and it's a way for us to collect, collect a little bit of revenue to go towards our tourism events, like the one we've got coming up with the poker run. So that is that. So open for discussion if you guys have some issues with any of those policy items.
Is there a motion to accept the policy?
I make a motion to accept it. The policy is written.
And that also comes from the committee. Does not need a second. Is there a discussion on the motion?
One question, Grant, is, are we limited to, you were talking about T-shirts, are we limited to the one vendor, everyone having, that that vendor has exclusive rights to T-shirt?
So not the vendor. Anybody can come in and make a T-shirt. The only, the only thing that is monopolized in this case is the storefront, which is A1. So when you want to get T-shirts, if the Mountain Goat Market wants to make T-shirts with the new logo, they would need to go to Aaron and say, okay, we need, we want some T-shirts with this type of design. Aaron would produce them. How, so that's, that's the only restriction. But any, any vendor in town, any group that wants to make T-shirts, stickers, or anything like that, is allowed to use this. They just need to go through Aaron to use it. I will say this, though, and I've talked to Aaron about this. If there is a situation, take, actually, take Mountain Goat Market or Mountain Outfitters, for example. They have kind of exclusive rights with certain product producers, they're, that they're already in contract with. If we run into something like that, I told Aaron that we would, we would be willing to pass the vector file to another production company, like an A1, and we could figure out the fee on that from the other company. But there is, so we're not completely locking you into using Aaron to produce your products, Big A Marketing. Somebody else could do it, they just have, they would still have to go through Aaron to get the vector file, because he'll control the vector file.
Are you, we planning to actually copyright this? Otherwise, how would we have the legal authority to restrict its use?
We could, we've talked about potentially trademarking it, that may be a next step. I don't think it keeps us from protecting it at all. You don't have to have somebody trademark to protect it. And I can tell you, anybody, anybody wants to take a picture on your phone of a shirt that they bought that was done, somebody can turn that into a vector file and do something else. It's almost impossible to control. This just gives us a little bit, as a small town, gives us a little bit more control than we would have if we just got, if we just gave the vector file to everybody in the universe at all, so. One thing also, that on the 5% fee, we went round and round about this a lot, and we decided that the 5% fee was worthy of, you know, for some revenue for tourism, beautification. It's also something that is, the vendors can actually put a sign up there that says, hey, every time you buy one of these T-shirts, 5% of the price goes to, goes to the city of Mont Eagle's Beautification Committee or Tourism Committee and all, so. It's also, could be a decent marketing ploy for the vendors.
I am concerned that having a private party, so if we pass this as our policy, then that 5% becomes city funds, and we're having a private person manage those public funds without oversight. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure it's a problem, but, but it sounds like it could be problematic. I, I love the idea of having people use this as a marketing tool to say, yes, when you buy this product, 5% goes toward beautification. I, I just, I'd love to, my gut tells me it needs to be a little bit less formal, because if we adopt this, it then becomes public money. And, and it would be cleaner then, you know, if the 5% came directly to the city, that would deal with it. But if we're just saying, okay, we're having Aaron collect our money for us and then turn it over to us without any oversight, that, that goes against the, a lot of the things that we've learned about in auditing. And maybe it's not a problem. I feel like we probably need to ask somebody before we adopt this.
What's the difference in occupancy tax and Airbnb collecting occupancy tax, and they remit to the city?
Maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's not. Yeah, I don't, I.
I can't see any difference in Airbnb collecting occupancy tax and sending it to the city, or really the homeowner himself collecting a city tax.
Or a hotel, managing it for, they pay monthly or quarterly, or managing it for a period of time.
I think it's well arranged that you have one, Big A Marketing as the sole, yeah.
Okay, that, maybe.
Pay your sales tax at the end of the month. I mean, you have to do that, so.
I'm just talking out loud. If that, that makes sense, those examples y'all bring up are valid. I certainly like the idea of supporting beautification in this way.
Well, that raises another question. Are there sales tax issues, number one, and number two? We bring the T-shirts to him, or he supplies the shirts?
He does everything. He supplies everything. We don't have to do anything except get a check from him every quarter for the.
No, the person that wants to use the service. Like Mountain Goat Trail wants T-shirts. Do they bring him the T-shirts?
That's up to Aaron.
And he puts them on, or?
That's completely up to Aaron.
And are there sales tax issues? He acting as part of the city or for the city?
No, he's, no, he's just.
It's not a product.
No, we're just getting a cut of wholesale price.
Okay. Because if he's done it for another vendor, there'll be a sales tax exemption from him to the vendor that he's done it for.
They collected, yeah.
Yeah. They've collected at point of sale.
Just, almost think of it as a donation, for using our, for using our file.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you all for that. Okay, quickly, sorry, the last couple of months, I've spoken to you about the Imagine Mont Eagle Subcommittee submitting to us a list of priorities, priority projects that we'd like to see funded in some form. And so we've been looking into possible grants. We've been looking at whether it should be city-funded, or whether there's a private fundraising effort that should cover this. The list.
I'm going to get it up here. Sorry, I can't get rid of this one.
That doesn't bode well.
No, no, I'll fix it.
So we've got a list of nine priorities, and that came from all three committees. There's two of them that I would like to, tonight, ask for city funding on. One, one is the landscaping of the downtown buildings that we've got tallied at $3,500.
Do we have them on that?
It was the fire hall.
Police department.
Police department.
Town hall.
Town hall and library.
And where are those funds from?
I'm sorry?
Where are those funds from? You said we had $3,500?
I'm asking the city, I'm about to make a.
No, I understand, but is it a budget item or donations, or?
No, I'm asking for the city to fund these two items. One is $3,500. The second one is for $8,000, which are the new planters along the Greenway. So it's a total of $11,500 that I'm, I'll be asking the city to fund those projects. All of the other seven projects, including the fire hall mural that was mentioned earlier, we will be looking at grant opportunities to cover those projects. These are two that we've just been circling around. We've missed a couple of grant cycles this, in August and September. And this is just kind of an easy fix. It would go along well with the decorations for the fall. It would also go along well with the decorations for Christmas, and also, it's $11,500 that I'll be asking for. The, I won't go through the list right now, but for the other possibilities, but, so I'd like to make a motion to put aside $11,500 for the new planters in the Greenway and landscaping of the downtown buildings.
All right, that's a committee motion. It doesn't need a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Do we get to see what they're going to look like?
Can you just second? It's a report from the committee. All right, I stand corrected. It needs a second to the motion.
Second.
Okay. Now, we need discussion.
Roll call vote, since it's a budget.
The what?
We'll have roll call vote since it's a monetary budget.
We can, I just like discussion on the motion first.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. Yes. Is there any discussion on the motion? What are these planters? Are those those barrels?
We have gone back and forth a number of different times. We're still trying to settle on, we're unsure about the funding part of this, and we're unsure about what we would, what the planters would actually look like. We've looked at probably 20 different ones. But if we have a set budget here and approve the budget, then, then we can move a little bit quicker forward with a couple of the ideas that have been presented to us for the, the look of the planters, and the height of them and everything, so.
Well, it's my understanding from the committee meeting that that might be put off till early spring, as to where to put the planters, who's going to maintain them, what's going in them. So I thought there was a slight hold on that.
I would like to secure the funding so that we could move forward at our quickest pace. Hopefully, good Lord, hopefully that is before the spring.
We need to know how much money we have before we can figure out what it will be, what will go in it, that kind of thing. And we're hoping to get a Mont Eagle landscape group of volunteers who will help us with these planters.
So that's what we're doing, and that is setting aside in the budget, this $11,500, and you guys are going to come back again when you have the product. Is that correct, or did I second a motion I didn't understand?
No, I think that's typically how it works, right? We, once we get final, final numbers and all, we come back for the actual spend part of it. Is that right?
So really, what you're asking for at this point is a budget amendment. And so where, where do we think that budget's going to come from, and where's it going to go, it sounds like?
Well, we're going to have to put it in something street-related, or do we have an account number for beautification?
We have Parks and Recs, which is probably going to.
We have Parks and Rec, which we have used for beautification in the past. I think we used it for your, I think we put the $6,000 you requested for the lights in there. I think that's where we, that fell, if I'm not mistaken. Do we have anything? And just, just for the record, I plan on next month, next meeting, after we meet with our accountant and close out the 25 fiscal year, I'm going to ask for a line item budget that's probably for, I don't know if we would call it Imagine Mont Eagle or something else, but it'll be a little bit larger budget item to cover these types of things, like the grant matches, the poker run that we've got, the little bit of expense of that, these types of planters and things. So I, I plan on eventually having a more itemized line item for that. But we can't do that until after we close out the year.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Can, can somebody review the motion? I'm sorry, I was, I was busy pulling up the list, and that fire report just didn't want to go away.
It is the, it's, the motion is for to set aside or budget $11,500 for landscaping the downtown buildings and the new planters in the Greenway.
And that'd be subject to final landscaping plan and planter review by city council?
Sure. The motion included. Repeat that name, please.
It's subject to final review by the, by the mayor and council, once we have a final plan.
Any other discussion on the motion?
So, this money would come out of bank, bank reserve, well, we'd have, we'd have to move it into Parks and Rec, or is it there?
Well, we, we're not going to be doing it now, are we? We can, we can do that next month, can't we?
Yeah, I'm just always curious where it's coming from.
Yeah, but without going through and looking at the expenditure side, there might be some, some monies that are allocated in other accounts that were not spent or priority. And at some point in time, this council's going to have to have a budget, I guess you'd call it a moral budget about spending funds on things like this. And, and you're going to have to make decisions that this is a priority, and maybe something else we're spending is not as high a priority. And it may be that, that in the future, when we have new business come in, like the motel that's supposed to be fixing the, approved the site plan for, then there'll be additional funds coming in, assuming the economy stays, stays level and you have new business. So there are different ways to do that. But ultimately, you're going to have to, if you don't have the new revenue come in, you're going to have to cut something.
Yeah, and we, we talked several months ago about this idea. This was supposed to be the month where we were going to go over the final budget from '25 and make several moves like this based on what our actual audited closeout looked like, but we haven't gotten the audited closeout. So we're, I think Grant is rightfully chomping at the bit to do something.
Well, it's been completed, it's just at the state level, the audit.
Yes. We haven't been able to see it.
No, it's still at state. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dean?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
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 Thank you all for that. Appreciate that. You've made a couple people in here really happy. We've been, we've been darting around this thing for a while. That's all I've got for Imagine Mont Eagle.
Uh-uh.
Oh, wait a minute. Sorry, I don't. I was going to have Ivor and Michelle Russell stand up and give us a quick little update on, and news flash for this weekend, this upcoming weekend's event.
We're in a couple hats here.
Ivor, is it online, so I can bring it up?
It is online. What's online?
Is the poker run online?
We have an Eventbrite. Eventbrite. We're doing a poker run. Thank you, fellows in the back, for being my safety. This is a tourism event. So our goal in tourism was to have a event of some kind every season. And we were going to paint garbage cans this fall, and that kind of fell through. That's moving to spring. So in a committee, and if you haven't joined one of our committees, please do, because they're awful fun, because this one came out of the committee, someone said, well, what are we going to do for fall? Because we got to have something cool for fall. And someone says, well, the Mountain Goat Trail just got connected to Tracy. Why don't we have a bicycle poker run? So here we are, this Saturday, 10 to 4. Registration starts 9 to 11 at the depot. We are wanting our businesses to be highlighted, and we want everybody to spend money in town, because January and February are pretty tough for our businesses. So our goal, we've got 50 participants. Our goal is to fill every 50 seat, bicycle seat. It's free. We have no budget, but we're doing it. We're going to have seven poker stops. It's going to be Oaks and Oliver's. So registration's at Depot Cafe. Deborah's the queen of all. We are then, first poker run, or the first stop is Oaks and Oliver's. Then we go to Paco Taco's. Then we go to High Point. Thank you, Isabel, for setting up a tent and handing out a poker card. Dr. Eric Schull's going to set up his tent over on the other side. Then we go to Tracy during the Fiery Gizzard Festival, so we're kind of playing team here. We go to Trackside for a card. We go to the Historical Society for a card, and then we go to Hank's for a card. It's a six-hour bicycle on mountain time event. This is not a race. So we also have an optional 24 scavenger hunt. So we have a lot of historical signs. We have lots of things for people to see. They can go see the visitor center, they can go to the CCC camp, they can see all the murals, they can call out a golden rod and. can see all the murals, um, they can, uh, call out a, a golden rod, and, and here Cardinal, you know, lots of different cool things, it's kind of like a highlight of all our community, um, it's going to be interesting, I've never done one before, so, we'll see how it goes, but everyone's, uh, pulling together, uh, the winner for the poker run, oh, at, at 4 o'clock, so they all come back, so they go to Tracy, they go to Mont Eagle, they shop or whatever, then they come back, 4 to 6 at Harton Park, uh, Sarah and Anna, Gypsy Rose are going to play during an awards ceremony, and then, people can go out, Smokehouse has music, uh, Fiery Gizzard Festival will have music, um, Caverns has music, so there's lots of places that we want to send them out to our community and spend money, and we want them to spend the night, too, if they're here from out of town, so, so far, we're up to 28, uh, participants, so I'm pretty excited about it, got 22 more to go, we're going to have a lot of walk-ons, but I've had people from all over, just like you would never know, would bike, go, "Oh, what a great idea!", um, it is going to be rain or shine, so, so, uh, bring the ponchos, I guess, I have no idea what, um, what it is, oh, and that, a horse show is going to go on, too, in, in Tracy, so that's kind of on the checklist, too, you can spend your entire day hanging out and just being on your bicycle at all of events, so, that's our goal, uh, we want people to spend money in town, we want our businesses to be successful, we want to showcase everything, we also want to showcase our Mountain Goat Trail, because we know that the Mountain Goat Trail is our biggest asset, uh, in Mont Eagle, so, uh, definitely super excited about it, there's an Eventbrite, uh, Mont Eagle Community News, Mont Eagle Bulletin Board, there's a Visit Mont Eagle page now, uh, that we've got up and running, and, uh, we're just, like I said, with a new logo and everything, we're just trying to evolve and to be us on purpose.
And the grand prize?
Oh, oh my god, I forgot to say that, so High Point has given us, High Point has given us a $200 gift card. And that's for the poker run, and Mountain Goat Market gave us a $50 gift card for the scavenger hunt, so it's, I mean, I would do that for a $200 gift card at, at High Point, but anyway, so it's open, everyone, everyone, all ages, it's going to be fun, everyone's been playing team, and I'm super excited, and if you need anything, holler by, I've never done this before, so, uh, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
This is going to be, this is going to be fun, like I said, this is one of the big, first big events that Imagine Mont Eagle has kind of coordinated and, and put together, so, um, come out, should be family friendly, and I've been looking at the weather for the last two and a half weeks, because I've got a big event, big family event this weekend, so far the weather looks like it's going to be good, so, should be good for the, for this also. All right, that's, that's all for Mont, Imagine Mont Eagle.
Thank you, what I'm going to do now, it'll tie into each other, I'm sure, as time goes on, is jump to new business, in deference to our engineer, Travis Wilson has joined us this evening.
Can I give a, the final Imagine Mont Eagle on the, the zoning-
There's more?
But I just wanted to let people know that we're, we're closing in on the zoning update. Sorry, so, so the, the, another part of Imagine Mont Eagle is trying to make our zoning ordinance, uh, make more sense and to encourage business downtown, and so I wanted to report, I think I've reported before, that we formed a subcommittee who has been working with the consultants, uh, to, to finalize that language, and I think we're just about there, so we're going to have one more meeting that I'm trying to schedule right now, and it's hard to schedule busy people's meetings, um, where we'll take a final look at what downtown C1 might look like, and really take a look at what we want the extent to be, so now that we've, uh, we've put a lot of time, I think we've met four or five times, uh, trying to decide how to change our zoning ordinance to make it more attractive to create a downtown, um, I think I said this last month, our, our zoning consultant has said we have a downtown ordinance that's made for the suburbs, and it's hard to have a downtown when your zoning ordinance is trying to build suburbs, so, um, I'm going to be going to the Planning Commission on the 7th and giving them kind of an overview on process, but it, um, I am cautiously optimistic that we're going to have some recommendations by our November meeting for the Planning Commission to consider, uh, and then to, uh, hopefully for this council to consider, so I just wanted to let folks know that that, that is still moving forward.
Thank you.
Is there a mandatory public hearing prior to any votes?
Yes.
Amendments to, uh, the C1 or anything?
Yes, I think what, what, um, of course, you and I talked about it the other day, because Dean's on the committee, uh, one, we're, this last meeting that we're going to have as a small group is going to be in anticipation of bringing it to the Planning Commission, and I was going to ask the Planning Commission when, so they would be required to do a public hearing, but I wanted to see from them if they wanted to do a public hearing beforehand, and you and I had also talked about sort of, um, shopping it to some of the business, some of the property owners downtown, and I think at our meeting that I thought was going to be on the 9th, it's now being rescheduled, um, I think we ought to talk about how exactly we want to do that, because I think that's probably something that's done with the committee in a small group.
Yeah, but I, my feeling is people that own the property are going to be directly affected.
Right, so that, so we need to set up and talk to them directly, so we're going to have a meeting.
If you don't own the property, I'm not as concerned about, I mean, they need, they need to know it, but if you're a property owner, uh, you need to be notified, you, you need to be able to have input, and they, you know, when they don't listen to them, but, but they should be able to speak.
Absolutely, absolutely, so-
And, and then if the ordinance is amended, there has to be a public hearing along that way.
Correct, 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 so there would be, what, what I think makes the most sense is to have two opportunities, one, where we reach out individually to landowners within the corridor, and then a second public, broader public hearing where the community can be involved.
And who does that public hearing, the mayor and alderman, or the Planning Commission?
Well, once it goes through the Planning Commission and the recommendation is made to city council, then the city council does that public hearing.
That's right, okay.
But I think prior to that, what we've been talking about is also reaching out to individual property owners to say, "Hey, this is what we're thinking, um, this is why we're thinking it", and get a little feedback.
Good, okay. Okay, back to a slight amendment here of the agenda, uh, and Travis, chime in whenever. The first item, under new businesses, I had to declare an emergency to purchase a sewer plant pump, we had one down, they run, um, alternately, if one goes down, we'd be down to one pump, so we had to get one repaired, and, um, I just need approval, or ratification of the purchase of an emergency, uh, of a sewer plant pump, so I'll need a motion on that.
This is the quote that we've got in front of us?
What, should I have?
The pump rebuild with bearing seals and impeller, the Avar pump model.
Is that it? Yeah, we're doing the, um, 40,000, because a new pump was recommended strongly, um, to rebuild, you never know what the rebuilds do and how long they last, we didn't want to take a chance on sewer pumps, so, is that-
Are we doing both of these, or are you asking us to pick one of them?
No, no, we're doing the one, we're doing the 40 that I already authorized.
You're doing the 38,000, 231, plus the 2,000 install?
Yes.
So this is not in our packet, this is something that was handed out?
It's not in the packet.
It was in the packet, yeah, it's in the packet.
Is one of us 38, 231?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just making sure we're, everybody sees the right thing.
I make a motion, we, uh, purchase the emergency sewer plant pump? Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion? It's a matter of fact, but after research and getting the best price we could and the best pump we could, uh, I went ahead and took that action.
These are paid, RW contractors or people that we have done business with previously?
Yes, for years.
That's the ones who, and your recommendation is, is to do that? Okay, but it's your recommendation that we, we do this, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I think I'm just slow, so now I understand, it's 16,000 with 2,000 install, or 38,000 with 2, $2,000 install, sorry, it's long.
Go ahead.
Dean?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Or Dan?
Yes. Yes, thank you for that, next, under new business, uh, Mont Eagle logo use policy, we can come back to that, this is in deference to Travis's time and his willingness to alter his schedule to be here, would you discuss the TDEC sewer order, so that we can move forward with that?
Uh, just a reminder, last year, the, the town, um, received violations at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, for violations, and received a consent order from the state, uh, from TDEC, and as part of that order, uh, we were to complete testing and identify issues and resolve, um, with some alternative solutions as to what would, um, repair the problems at the plant, which, uh, we conducted testing in the collection system last year, um, we conducted testing at the plant, we worked very closely with Jerome and Dylan, John at the plant, uh, to ensure that we were covering all the bases, the most efficient, um, solutions were looked at, and alternatives were defined, so, uh, through, um, months of work with Dylan and Jerome, working with the, the vendor that built the plant, and using different chemicals, um, and looking at some, some different testing related to solid removal, uh, we've determined through what, I won't go into the, to the results of the report, but I sent that out to, to each of you last week, glad to answer questions, but through the findings, um, the plant is not designed with solid removal equipment, it was never designed with that, that's what it's going to take to meet, uh, limits and to not violate, and so we've outlined some potential alternatives, uh, that can be considered, and so each alternative has a little bit different pieces of equipment, they're at different costs, they're at different operating costs, they're at different annual cost, uh, they're at different levels of operation, and so we talked with the staff at the wastewater treatment plant, we've provided a recommendation to use a screw press, uh, pumping equipment, which is economical, uh, it's, it's, uh, as far as maintaining, it's, it's fairly ease of maintaining, um, and it will perform the work it's needed to, to maintain and not violate, so the, um, one of the main things to consider is right now the town is paying an outside contractor to come and, and haul off solids at the plant, uh, they've previously and historically been doing that, at least every 12 to, say, 18 months, there's issues in getting that contractor here when they need it, um, a, a bigger issue is once that vendor or contractor is out of business, or should they go out of business, um, it's very difficult to find a replacement vendor to come and, and get, pull the solids out of the plant, and so without that, the plant is not going to be able to meet the limits and will continue to be in violation, and so, we looked at a payback, because it is quite expensive to continue to haul and to pull the solids, so, with the equipment that we looked at, there's a payback in four to six years of purchasing the equipment and for being able to perform that onsite, which will result in the staff being able to operate the plant more efficiently, um, and not violate, and so, that, that was part of our recommendation, uh, the biggest thing is funding, so, you're on a time limit with TDEC, in order to figure this out and implement a plan to, to resolve the issues, and so, um, on a separate unrelated call with the state regarding a funding cycle last week, uh, the mayor and I talked with folks at TDEC, and funding cycles for, say, SRF, CDVG, they're once a year in February, so currently, um, the town applied for funding for a different project in February of '25, that money will not even be available until second quarter of '26, and so, um, should the town consider funding, uh, through SRF or CDVG, you're looking at probably, uh, 2027 at the earliest, to be able to, to have access to those funds, and so with the break, break even period, uh, in consideration of four to six years, uh, plus, I don't know that the state would allow you to, to violate, um, you would have to get your contractor to come, uh, more frequently than he currently is to remove the solids in order to not violate, so, there would have to be a change in protocol in the meantime, in order to, uh, really use SRF, CDVG, or some other type of state funding, the only other option is to get a bond, a 20 or 30-year bond, that's not tied to a time, timeframe, I would not recommend using cash on hand, um, just because I wouldn't, um, I would save that, and, and either, I think your options are, are getting a 20 or 30-year bond, or waiting and, uh, and utilizing some type of funding, but realistically, you're looking at 2027 before you can actually implement a plan, and I don't know that TDEC would approve that, but that's, I think, at this point, that's your two options.
Thank you for that, and so that we can discuss it, based on that information, I will accept a motion to proceed with the bond or some other suitable source of funding on a more immediate basis, um, to resolve this issue of solids removal.
And I will add the cost, you see on the screen, that's a class V estimate, which is very high level, uh, we haven't done, uh, you know, we've called vendors and talked with some people, but, uh, that's why there's such a high range in estimates, but for this exercise, for a feasibility study, that's, I just want to make sure everybody knows, that's a, it's a class V estimate, that was some high level, that's why there's a, a large range, so all that could depend on your equipment, your vendors, the install, um, you know, we have to really get down and see where your electrical's coming from, and there's a footprint, what's required, so, so really, that, that piece would be tied down as part of the design process, uh, but that's a pretty, pretty accurate range based on the equipment prices that we've called around the vendors, that it would be within that range.
This, this is the first item we talked about at the workshop on the consent order for, started out talking about phosphorus and, uh, you talked on the timeline and-
That's correct.
The, the press for sled removal.
That's correct.
That, that was, that was number one.
Yes, sir.
That we talked about the other night.
That's correct.
So, when we talked about it the other night, the, the next impending action was that you were going to submit a quarterly report to TDEC indicating that this was, uh, the likely the route we're going, have you already submitted that report?
That's what's on your screen right now.
So, has it gone in, or you, what you look, so you're looking for authorization to submit this report, is that right? We don't, we don't have a, a bond in front of us to vote on.
No, no, I'm, uh, so we're going to submit the report, I'm not necessarily asking for a motion, that's, that's the fact, so we're, we're going to submit that, I submitted that as a draft for your review, just in case there are some, uh, comments that we might need to incorporate, really, I think, uh, a decision with the board would be to proceed or, or give some type of, um, direction, because my next step is to talk with TDEC, because once I submit this, they know that we're going to know the solution, and the next question they're going to ask is, when is this going to happen? And so really, I think a direction needs, or a decision needs to be made, are we going to, uh, pursue this, uh, via bond, or are we going to pursue this through funding? If you're going to pursue it through funding, then applications don't open until February of '26, if you're going to pursue it through bonds, then that, I would encourage you to start talking to a bond rep, and to, to start figuring out what, you know, what is next. So I will say that last year, when we did the rate analysis, uh, we, when this first started, we had put in an amount, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's somewhere just over half a million for wastewater treatment plant upgrades, anticipating some things that would need to be done, so you already have the low-end estimate built in to your rate study, and your rates that were currently implemented, and so, this is, I will say that it's not something that is just thrown in a monkey wrench that was not planned, so, so you do have this as an actual line item in your budget, um, when I say budget, your CIP table, uh, that your rate analysis was built off of, and then there's also other items in there that you can push off or not do to, to make up the difference, should it be the, the higher end estimate, and so, it's not like there's, you know, this is a whole new thing that we have to regroup, this was a, a line item in a consideration that we put in there last year.
So, I don't, I'm not sure really what, what we would be voting on tonight, or, do we, do we actually need to give him approval to submit this report?
Well, I think so, because we're, we're talking about going to the press, using the press, correct? correct? You showed us like a centrifuge and a grind bed and
I mean, is this a commitment if we submit this report to TDEC?
Yes, it is. The report's due October 15th to TDEC, or you're in violation.
And it's a, but having, having this option in there is a commitment to TDEC as opposed to maybe this is what we're thinking about?
What it does is the findings that is inside the report will trigger them to say, okay, you figured out what's going on now, give me a timeline. And so you don't, I don't know that you have to necessarily decide anything tonight, but as soon as I meet with them, I'm going to say, I'm not sure, let me get back to you. And so you're on the clock under this consent order currently. So every 90 days, we have to submit one of these reports. And so you're really just kicking the candle next month. So you really don't have to do anything this
Right, I'm sorry. I'm not sure the council needs to say, give approval for him to submit his 15th, the report on the 15th.
No, it's not to submit the report.
Do we have to approve it?
Excuse me, it's not
Mandatory that he submitted.
Excuse me, it's not that I'm asking to submit the report. That is mandatory, he has to do it. It's due the 15th of October. I'm asking the council for authorization to proceed with the bonding, or getting, obtaining a bond or other suitable financing so we can at least start the clock because it'll take some research. Do I?
We did. I would prefer to have a workshop with what we talked about last, I believe last Monday when you were here.
Well, we went over all this and you're right, this was the first item that we addressed.
Yeah, but we had talked about some dollars on hand that we might be able to take. And then you said in February is before we look at the state revolving loan thing?
That's, that's when the applications come out. That's correct.
And some of that's like 1% money or something?
It is, and you probably won't have access to that until 2027.
But, you know, if we say we're going to do bonds, there's more, I mean, there's a cost to those bonds.
Absolutely.
We have no idea what that is.
That's right.
And I think we need to be able to look at maybe some funds in that capital improvement fund, excess funds or something, cash on hand funds. You said we had to have a year's reserve or something.
That's great. That's recommended by your financial person. Yeah, I would, yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to see us commit to contacting the bonding, a bond company that's going to issue bonds when there may be better alternatives for the common good of the utility.
Well, the cash on hand may be needed for other things that is not budgeted, like matching a grant or the things that come up, pumps that come up. I mean, there's, there are other ways to spend cash besides
I think it's
Waiting for SRF. And what bothers me with the timeframe of SRF, they may not forgive you if you continue a phosphorus violation. And that's why it's almost, I don't want to use the phrase
Yeah, and I'm not accusing any of that. I understand. I'd like to see option one, option two, option three.
Let me start getting information on a bond then, because we know SRF. We know SRF, the window doesn't open until February.
So you're just, you're just going to put together, compile some information?
Yeah, I'll contact
Well, you don't need our approval.
Okay, that's what I'm going back to. I'm not sure what we would really be approving. I'm for all of this. I understand we've got to do this. You convinced me the other day in the workshop, this is a great option for us and stuff. I just don't know what we're voting on tonight. You know, I don't think there's a need for a vote tonight. You can pursue the bonds as long as you're not committed to it and find out some information. Then we, then we can weigh out the three different options that we may have.
Yeah, really, I need to talk with the state and find out what they say is the next step. Because once I submit that, my plan is to call them and have a sit down and say, so what we figured out? And what is your requirements for timelines? And start talking to them about that. Because the next quarterly report, there's really nothing to say except see the last report. And then that's going to get us in trouble because we can take no other actions.
All of those types of responses from the state will also help determine which revenue source we wanted, or which, which funding source we want to use for something. There's just a lot of unanswered questions for tonight. But I'm hoping that the state's just going to look at you and say, right after the report and say, Travis, we love Montego so much, we're just going to cut you a check for it all right now.
Maybe you should come to the meeting with me and talk.
I think Dean may be better at that than me.
And just so you know, the meeting that Travis and I had last week was with the folks that do SRF's for TDEC. So it wasn't, tell just to go through the SRF folks, right?
She's the manager over SRF.
So I just pulled up the capital improvement plan that pump, which our rate studies were based on. And Travis is right, we budgeted a half million dollars. We said we were going to get a loan for $427,000 for that. I do think you ought to be looking at bonds. I think it's shitty for us to do it, said, yes, please look and bring us the information. I think it makes sense. Because we, we're going to spend, we decided to, in order to clean this out with a contractor, we're going to spend around $100,000 a year.
And for years, you're going to spend the amount that it would take you to purchase the equipment.
So if SRF takes us 24 months to get the funding secured, we will have spent $200,000 by waiting. So I think it makes sense to look into it.
Well, we were looking at spending $100,000 a year with that Gullett.
That's, that's the same. That's correct.
That's what he's talking about.
So in two years, you're going to spend half, essentially half of the cost of the equipment, thereabouts.
And it will double because I've asked Gullett to come twice a year instead of the 12, 13 months.
Which he has to come because if he doesn't come, you're going to violate because the solids need to be taken out. So it's not that we can just not ask him not to come. He needs to come and he's already scheduled to come back in November. I think, John, is that correct? Gullett scheduled to come back in November?
This month, no, we're
Yep. So that'll buy some time.
We gotta get used to it.
Once a quarter minimum, that's correct.
So the motion needs to be that he can, he can approach the authorities about this whole issue with all the violations and everything, with progressives talk that we're working on it and we actually have a plan, but
Well, the census is, my colleagues are saying, I don't need a motion to proceed. They want me to research bond in other forms as long as I don't commit to anything, which I don't do.
You don't need a motion then to go ahead with your
Not necessarily, no, sir.
Okay. I'm clear on that.
And I will bring back any findings after I talk with TDEC. I'll send out a memo and we'll update the board on what I hear, so.
Very good.
While you go, we put you in charge.
Sweet. I say go for it. I'll go to the meeting with you and we'll get down to write the check.
Fundraising for this screw press.
Absolutely. Thank you, Travis, for all of your hard work and staying with us tonight to get this resolved. Continue to hope that we can get these things taken care of at this tour.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Travis?
Yeah, I thought we, he had to have provisioned something about the pump station at the Waffle House. We were on test, the air relief.
We're in the process of doing that. Yep, we're working with John and town staff to get the air relief valve. I think it's been ordered, parts have been ordered and probably scheduled to be installed within the next week or two. So we should be able to retest and know the results of where we stand with that.
Will that be like 24 hours after it's installed? Do you go get a reading or what's the timeline?
We probably need to wait a couple of days and let everything equalize because if it has been airlogged, then we need to let, let that cycle a number of times and make sure that we've got just a fair assessment of what that pump station now is operating at like with an air
About a week then or two weeks?
No, a couple of days.
Okay.
Couple of days and we'll come back to a test. And then we can, we'll, we'll know immediately after the test. And so we can certainly send out an email or report because that, based on the results, as you remember from our discussion in the workshop, then that's going to mean, you know, option A or B. So we can certainly update the board via email as we find out.
Okay. Any other questions for Travis? All right. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your
Thanks Travis, thanks for coming up.
Travel safe. Okay, back to the agenda. We did that. Before we get to the Alderman, you want to do the computers for city hall?
Everybody has that in their packet. We made four computers for city hall. And it includes travel and the software people to come and install everything for us. Our computers now are on a lease and the lease is just about up. If we keep the ones we got, we won't have any warranty. The new ones will have a five-year warranty. And support.
Do you know what the current operating systems and current specs on the current systems are?
They're six years old.
Looks like Windows and Linux.
Well, these are, these are the new ones and these are top of the line. This is 32 gig of RAM and that Ultra 7 processor is absolutely the best that you can get. I was on, I went to the Dell website today and I'm all for that when we buy computers because they go obsolete less often. I guess I'm just wondering if we did that last time, if we did that last time, we might still very well have.
We have Dell computers, yes.
But we don't, we don't know what their current processors or any of that.
What happens to these computers that are leased? Will they come and get them?
I don't know. I'll have to ask
What happens to the information that is on that hard drive?
They're going to transfer all of our information
Yeah, damn it. I know nothing about computers, but I've always been told that when you turn in a computer, that that information, all that, any proprietary information, customer data and stuff is going to still be on that computer.
I don't sell some software company.
This is the software company that just serves municipalities. I went to their website today and sort of poked around, so I would assume that they understand.
They do.
Yeah.
I think we need clarification of what happens to, I don't know what kind of data is on that computer, but if the businesses have to give to those customers, I'm assuming there's customer information, there's employee information, everything that this town operates on, all the private information of employees, everything. And I would hate to think that, you know, that just goes out to somebody that bought them at a yard sale and
We can certainly check that. I would like to think that a company of this reputation would scrub the computer. I know what you're saying, but we'll make sure it didn't get to the cloud and that it's not on the computers and all.
I just like to need, someone needs to tell us what happens to that information and what the level of
We'll get that answered.
Did, did we look at possibly leasing again? A different set, a new set of computers?
They are not leasing anymore.
Okay.
Is this a budgeted item?
No, it's not. But I do have in the budget for machinery and equipment.
But this will be a capital purchase, so this would, it would have to, we'd have to move it from machinery and equipment. Do we know what purchasing the leased computers would have cost?
A thousand dollars. But they won't have any warranty and the software company won't support it.
So the soft, we're buying these computers from the software company that runs our water and sewer software? Okay.
And everything. And the accounting and everything.
The same software company?
So the software company is in, also in computer sales?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the price is about right. I went to dell.com today and Googled it. It's, it's, it's not, it's not for
No governmental discount or?
No, it's retail.
Does this include the, the transfer of the data and wiping? It does? Technical services, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's the $2,500.
So I'll accept a motion to go ahead with the purchase?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the purchase of the computers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Did you decide whether that would be taken out of, or do that later? What account?
To what?
Well, if you got, what's your budget for within the
Deal with it later?
Yeah, within the city recorder budget, there's a line item for computers. So we can move it from that into capital reserve and then
We need to make a 25 balance and stuff overall.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hold on, please.
Dean?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. That carried. That concluded the new business. Let's go back to Alderman reports. Dean?
Yeah, I've got eight or 10 things.
Well, okay.
First, I guess we have the parks and recreation. We talked a couple of times about restrooms for our parks that we, we have people using those and basically have no restroom, other than a porta potty for most of the time. And I just, I can't believe that we don't have restrooms for our parks. And I think that needs to be dealt with and given a priority in that we can have restrooms in our park.
I quite agree. Historically, the problem has been vandalism.
Well, I understand that. Maybe the police department needs to go down there with their magic wand and wave it down there instead of here in the city meeting.
Well, that could be if you want
It'd be much more useful.
Or you could get cameras or you could do any number of things, but we need to look at that. But vandalism has been a major issue
Well, I understand that.
Over the years.
Other places have restrooms, I mean, in parks, the national parks, everywhere you go, there's a place for people, for restrooms. And I think it's, I think it's a shame that the town of Montego doesn't and take whatever steps is necessary. You know, if we've, we've kept somebody from coming in here and killing everybody tonight, surely to God, we can get a bathroom in a park.
Well, there are bathrooms there. The thing is when to open them and who's watching them, but we'll certainly look into that and discuss that.
Well, I mean, we've got close cameras in here and the way technology is working, can't we just put a camera outside that's recording time and date and who's coming in and who's coming out? And if there's a vandalism incident, we ought to be able to go after them.
Okay, I'll look at cameras.
How's the guy in the blue van watching?
He might be the one messing with that.
Nah, I bet he'll wipe the seat because he's been here a long time, so.
Well, anyway, I think, you know, we just talked about it. We talked about it. So next month, I want to make a budget that, or motion that we put at least $11,000 in the bathrooms to match the planters. Now, whatever is necessary, I think we need, and I'm assuming we'd start out with a design and I'm assuming Nate has some expertise.
Well, they're there. I mean, I think, I think
Well, I know about well, like at Harton Park. And then we need to look at these over here and see if they need something updated or different sinks or commodes or whatever.
I mean, I think they're, they're open anytime people use the pavilion.
No, they're not. Yeah, we opened it. They opened it, but every time I've had my grand children over there and when he says, "Ah, I gotta go to the bathroom," we go down there and the door's locked.
Well, they, they will, my wife had an event on Friday and they opened them.
And I think they all come for events.
So you just have to reserve the pavilion right now. But I think you're right. If we get a camera and we can control it, then they, I don't see
But if your wife comes over here tomorrow and is in the park, stargazing, and then she decides she wants to go to the bathroom, she's going to have to come to city hall or make other arrangements.
Or wait for those planters to arrive.
Y'all, y'all leave my planters alone. One thing, Dean, on that is we can also look at some grant opportunities for, for park improvement, which may cover that. We actually had a grant that we applied for, I think the, I can't remember what it was now. That was going to be including upgrading the Hannah Pickett Park stage and the bathrooms in the back. But that, we either didn't make the deadline or that, or we didn't get that grant or something. But that's a grant opportunity also that we should look into in addition to potentially funding that through the city.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I think we need to make it a priority if we don't get the grant. And also I think we need to do a study on, on the pavilion here. If there needs to be improvements on the pavilion or get enlarged or whatever, it seems like it gets a lot of use. And I would assume as far as Hannah Pickett Park in combination with the pavilion, and it's my understanding they're going to close the South Cameron Recreation Center, is that correct?
Not anytime soon. It's a, the, yeah, it's going to be
Well, as we are, we need, if we want to do improvements in Hannah Pickett Park and on the pavilion, we need to start that process because they are going to close South Cameron.
Yeah, I mean, it's in their long-term plan. There hasn't been any dates to do that.
So I think that's something that we need to work on. Another thing, I brought it two, three times, is about the honoring the veterans of our community by doing the flag display like most, a lot of communities have. They'll have, most of them will have the American flag as the centerpiece. And then they'll do the branches of service kind of in a semicircle. And we've talked about where would you put it, where would you put it, or there is no place. You know, I think logically, we need to eliminate places, and I think we need to start with Hannah Pickett Park and say, "Yes, it can go there, but," or "No, it can't go there," and see where it can go. And I think we need to, again, we need to have a design of something so we know what space is needed to accommodate this. And if some of you guys can tell me someone that can, that would work on that as far as a preliminary design layout thing, I'll be happy to, you know, to work on that, but I have no idea where to start on that.
Are you talking about apartment this one?
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's that, there's the two big green space areas right at the exit off-ramp. I wonder if those would have plenty of room. I wonder if T-Dot would ever give us a license agreement to do that. It's T-Dot property, but they do that sometimes.
Most of them, I mean, if it's part of a park, it's usually in a park like Hannah Pickett, or it's at the ballpark, or it's something where people can come in and there's other activities. If you go to Whitwell, for instance, you may be familiar with Whitwell, they've got a nice, I think they call theirs the POW veterans. That's how they started that. I don't know. But anyways, they have a very nice one. Pikeville has one. Yeah, none last, about everyone has one to pay tribute to all our veterans. And to tie that in, I know everybody wants to go home, but we were talking about Montegoat Cemetery earlier. We have, you know, a lot of veterans buried over there, but one in particular is Glenn Rollins, was a Vietnam veteran, and he was killed in action in about 1968. And his grave was in total pitiful shape, and a couple of volunteers went over there and put some dirt on it and improved it and brought it up to at least a minimum standard of acceptance. But in talking about the cemetery problems, you know, we've got veterans buried over there. We've got a soldier killed in action, and basically he has no family left here in Montegoat. And we've got some volunteers that are willing to work on that project separate from this. But I just want to bring to your attention that I think, you know, when the minister offered our prayer, one of the main things he talked about was the common good of the community. And I think we need to do as much as we can to honor and respect our veterans and make this, again, make this a priority, and we'll talk about it next month, I guess. And then workshops, those are public, Mayor. We talked about that before. That's a public?
Yes.
Okay. Do they need to be, the audio need to be recorded on that for any reason or?
Not that I've been told, no.
Okay. I mean, internally, you don't, there's no problems later on?
No, because no decisions can be made. It's just conversation, basically.
Well, after that, somebody mentioned, we can't vote on it. Everybody nodded. So we can't do that.
No, you can't.
But I think that that issue is the one we were just talking about, where we decided that we needed to bring it up before the council, so we didn't have.
It was brought up under citizens' comments about the man in the blue van. That concerns me greatly. He may be harmless, and I hope he is. But again, I think that's something the police department needs to be able to assure us that they have on top of that and that they know who he is, where he's from, his background. And I think those are higher priorities that the town of Montegoat needs to see that that's taken care of. It may already have been, and we don't know that.
I can share your past, and I spoke about this two months ago.
Okay.
I have checked in. He has no warrants anywhere. I don't expect to issue anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
So one thing we may not, may want to consider is having some sort of no solicitation ordinance that gives the officer some authority over, so they have a reason to go chase somebody off or tell them not to go. That's one option, I think.
Dean, not to hijack you, but can I chime in on that? Because it was on my list. I was scrolling through the ordinance, and currently in Title 11, Chapter 101, for disturbing the peace, it does list offensive conduct that no person may knowingly do that. Can we just ask him to put his shirt on? I mean, that seems pretty base.
I mean, we can, but say you've got a runner that's running down the road, and he decides, or she decides to sit, well, decides to sit at the park with no shirt on, so it kind of, I mean, I keep all day long.
Yeah, I'm not asking to have him arrested. I'm asking just to ask him to keep his shirt on from a decency.
You do one for one, you gotta do it for everyone, so.
No, no, I get it.
But I mean, if there's a woman there with a young child, and this guy is sitting there with her shirt on, and he's staring in that direction, she's got to feel uncomfortable. I would have felt that. It's an open park. It's public park. I get it. He's not doing anything wrong. I hear it. But if there's kids here, can we not say, "Hey, you know, put a shirt on?"
Well, have we shared these concerns with the man in the blue van?
I have not. I don't have the reasons on top.
Okay. So would it be proper for the chief or the police department to talk to the man in the blue van to see if, you know, in a nice way that...
Well, the difference here is this isn't, this isn't somebody that comes once a month or once every, you know, once a year or something like that. He's there almost every day, and that is a, that could be considered a nuisance. But I think we need to give a little bit more teeth to the police department to be able to talk to somebody about this.
Sorry, Dean, I'm back.
We can look at that, chief, with whatever the laws are now. I don't know if it's loitering or, I'm not sure he's soliciting anything, but...
So far, he's not broken any laws, and as Alderman Grant had suggested, if we redo or improve our ordinance, that would give us the ability to act further.
He's, we have a no camping ordinance, but it only applies to Laurel Lake. That seems like a really easy fix. It's just to make it to apply to all town property.
Yes.
I can work on that.
Yes.
Public streets as well.
Next thing I have, I'll do that. Mayor, you and I talked about granting raises to employees during the middle of the budget year, and I'd ask you to get a ruling from MTAS on that.
MTAS told me that I was responsible for the day-to-day, and I was the mayor, and I could do those things. I want to further discuss it at our October workshop.
Do we have a written thing from MTAS?
I didn't get a written thing yet, no.
Okay.
I've asked, why I just didn't get it.
Okay, so they'll send it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And then the next thing is the, Debbie had informed me at the beginning of the meeting that used to, we had, employees had a right for a hearing if they were terminated. And Debbie, I think you said that's not in that ordinance any longer? Does the council have the authority to grant that to an employee if they ask for it?
From what the attorney told me, because I've researched this, no, there's no provision for that.
No provision for the council granting a hearing for an employee's termination?
As I understood it, I'll research it further if you think it's necessary.
Yeah, I think it is. I think, I think this council has the authority to grant a hearing or to take any action they want to with a city employee, whether it be to dismiss them or discipline them, depending on what the complaint is on the employee. Sometimes, first offense is a verbal warning, second offense is a three-day suspension, or, I mean, I thought that was standard operating procedure in personnel policies.
Not necessarily, and not within the probationary period.
Well, I understand about probationary period. Usually, you just don't, you just don't hire them. The probationary period ends, and you, the decision is made not to hire. Now, it's kind of fuzzy on that because I wasn't on the council then, but I think the council voted to adopt the ordinance that said the department heads would hire and fire employees. And it wasn't, seemed like it wasn't, 30 days later, Ricky Avant was fired, and I asked the question, whoever the department it was, did they fire him? And they said, "No," and you said you fired him.
That's right.
So would that be in violation of that ordinance?
My understanding is no. The only thing the ordinance directed me to do is department heads with the order.
Yeah, I was, I was there when that, when that policy was passed. I think it was already the policy that department heads, that the mayor could hire and fire. And we altered the policy so that the mayor could not fire a department head without approval of the council. So we restrained it back.
You're talking about just the department head, then?
Yes, just the department head, yeah.
So even if the charter says the mayor has the authority for the day-to-day activities, is that something the council has the authority to do?
The charter has other specific languages in there.
Well, we don't need to get into that now. I've got a couple of things here real quick. One of the issues that's coming up that an employee has been fired for not falsifying a report.
I think it's best that we look into that and go to executive session.
I don't, I disagree. I think that's something, and I guess we just need to vote on it, see how three people feel.
Well, I don't have any information tonight to discuss that. If you want a special call meeting, we can do that, and I'll get all the information.
Well, I would make a motion that this council pursue this matter and grant a hearing to the employees and hear the stories and gather the information and the facts, hopefully, and then the council, and I feel like the council has the authority to take action on that. And so that would be my motion.
So they will second to the...
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
I think, you know, this is stemming from, I think partially from the fact that we had a workshop after I think this had happened, and we were not informed of anything. And that, to me, is problematic because while you are in charge of the day-to-day activities, part of your charge as the mayor is to lead us and to help us understand why things are happening, why you're doing the things that you're doing, and when that doesn't happen, then we have to lean on the other part of our charge, which is to be a check. And so I think I'm mostly disappointed that we didn't get briefed on the situation. And I guess I would hope that with a little bit more communication, and in this, with a hearing, that would be that communication. I guess I hate that we're having to come to a vote on it because it could have been something we could have just talked about in the workshop and perhaps it worked out.
Well, we can still talk about it in the workshop if you want.
Yeah, you know, there's two specific incidences that we're going to, that is kind of generating this whole conversation. And the broader issue is the authority of the mayor's office for certain things, which I think we're in a little bit of limbo in, and I think there's some disagreement about it. You know, you committed city funds without the council's approval in a raise, which has always in the past been done through city council vote, or town council vote. And then the most recent release of one of the employees was another one that's kind of caught us off guard. And as Nate said, we haven't really been briefed on any of that to understand why, when, how, or where. I think both of those things as a, as a bigger issue, I think we need to look at and talk through some of the authority for the mayor to make some of these, those types of decisions.
All right, then we'll schedule a workshop for that.
Well, my problem with workshop is we can discuss it, but we can't vote on it.
Well, you can discuss it, get your information, and then vote on it. We'll have a special call meeting.
But why don't we just have a special call meeting and get our information and vote on it? Be that way.
Because it sounds like there's more discussion. I'll do whatever you all want. I just think in the day-to-day operation, if I had to report to you on everything I decided and everything that came up, it would be...
No, I'm not even going there, Mayor.
No, that's just different.
I think my motion was to have a hearing, was it? And if we have that hearing, it would have to be as a public, it would have to be as a special call meeting. Debbie, would that be?
I don't know if that's true. I don't know.
If we're all present, it's going to have to be, it doesn't have to be special calls. You'd have to wait until October.
Well, I would think we could do the hearing in a workshop, and based on the results of the hearing, then we could take action at a public meeting, because I do, I do get a little uncomfortable. I remember long before I was on the council, I was sitting out there in the audience, and there was a whole lot of conversation, I think it actually involved Rayline, about his hourly rate. And there was this long, prolonged discussion about whether we were going to pay him 50 cents or 75 cents more an hour based on his performance, and it was, it was a, it was a personnel issue. And so while personnel issues should be discussed in the public, I think I'd rather have the hearing in a workshop, and I fully support the idea of a hearing, and then if the hearing has results, then let's take it to this forum. Because otherwise, we can, I just don't know how appropriate it is to discuss the details when we know it's going to be on TV. If people are interested, it's a public meeting. They can come listen to it.
They might not want to get one.
Well, that's just, that's just my gut. I think we should talk about it. I think...
Well, my motion is just to have a hearing, so I'm not, I'm not saying it's got to be at a meeting or at a workshop. If we're going to grant personnel hearing, and that was my motion, I think.
Okay.
Say if that's what they're saying.
Yeah, and I seconded that, and I think it's probably important maybe for this, yeah, for this hearing, for us to hear the other side of the story, because we're kind of only getting one side of it right now. Really haven't gotten all of that, but I think we need to hear from, I need to think we need to hear from the employee that was, that was involved.
I agree.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, hold those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One other thing.
Yeah.
What's the status of, when we got our workshop last Monday, I believe Debbie handed us a copy of the lawsuit from Rusty Leonard about the...
It's been turned over to the insurance.
And what's the, what's the next thing for that?
We're waiting on that.
They come and interview us if it's like the other insurance matters, and then they go to court, put in an answer.
So are there any, is that the only lawsuit we have against the town of Montegoat this time?
No. Well, at various stages. It's the matter of the Lawson family and the road.
What's the status? Has that been filed?
It's been filed and discussed, and now it's moved to mediation. I'm waiting for a date on mediation. There was, I think that was, there's only two. I think that's it as far as lawsuits.
That's all I got.
Rand?
Yeah, I'll be fast.
No, take your time.
Okay. If I stretch, seven cent extra. In terms of the lawsuit, I just want to make a comment. Mayor, I've told you this separately, but I'd like to say in front of the council, this lawsuit for the RV at the church, or the camper at the church, I do not believe we should, I believe we should instruct our insurance company not to settle this and for us to go back with our opinion on the interpretation of our own ordinances. Because if we settle this, it's not very much money really, but if we settle this just to get out of it, then we've allowed, will allow for the camper to come back, and then we're going to have to deal with this later on in other, in other businesses. So I believe it's, I just want to make sure that we're instructing them to, we don't want to just quickly settle on this one. I'm just to... Let me look here. Oh, quick note, the two grants that were filed, one was the Brownfield grant that was filed. We're waiting to find out about that. Council already approved whatever would be like, whatever be associated, whatever be responsible in the city on that, which is zero right now. There was another grant that was submitted, and I'm trying to get the details of that. Unfortunately, our grant person is, has been out of town. But it was for the mural, Fire Department mural that we've talked about. So we've applied for a grant to cover the funding on that, and I'll get more detail... So we've applied for a grant to cover the funding on that and I'll get more details on that before the next meeting for sure, about the match and about the, who it's through and everything. So that's it. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions of Grant or Dean so far? Dean, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Dan?
No.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Nate?
I got, it's a pretty short list. I hope it's, none of these are too difficult. Disturbing the peace, we've taken care of. The second one regarding, oh, let's do the second one that revolves, involves Rayline. I had a conversation with Chad, I guess now a month and a half ago, about problems accessing the helipad in an emergency. And he and I talked it through and we realized that there was a damage to the gate going through the ball field and we own the ball field, so we have control over that. And so I talked to the mayor about looking into two things. One, getting some better signage so the truckers understand better why they're not to park in that alley. But since we don't own that alley, I had to ask him to look into actually having the backside of that fence open and a load of gravel dropped so that in an emergency situation, if we've got to get somebody to the life force, we can do that. Has there been, have you had a conversation with Rayline?
No, I haven't had a chance yet.
I would think that seems like a pretty simple thing that's gonna, that could have the potential to save lives.
Well, my only comment is it hasn't been an issue and the area right along the side of the fence on the Chinese restaurant side is asphalt and a more suitable surface.
Well, it was brought to me as an issue. So I think if there has been an issue and what they do is they go in and try to move the trucks. And while I think we ought to keep that lane open because you're right, that's an easier way to do it and if the lane's open, we ought to use it, I think we ought to have a backup because if somebody's in a medical emergency, it's just...
Who made the issue? I know you spoke to the officer, but who spoke to him? Do you know?
No, I spoke with Chad. So Chad's the one that has been charged with moving trucks in an emergency situation.
That's been an issue several years ago and they put up signage on the fence.
Yeah, we have signage on the fence.
Yeah, the signage isn't great. It says no parking. It doesn't really give a sense of why you, that it's emergency vehicle access to the helipad. And so I think that signage could be improved. But the reality is, as far as I understand, I think Tony, when he was in office, researched this, and we don't have an easement. We don't have needed access to that location. But we have needed access to the ball field and it's pretty much open. So the tree fell on the backside of the fence, it's damaged anyway. So ought to be easily to chop it open and we'll have to get it repaired anyway. So if you look into that.
I will. I have another chance.
Uh, let's see. The other one, I had a citizen ask me about speed bumps on North Bluff Circle. And I know that we had, or North Bluff Drive, I know we had lots of conversations about speed bumps on North Bluff Circle a long time ago. But I wanted to ask the council if there was, if we wanted to talk about a way to look into that. So I had looked into it a little bit. I know that there are municipal code, there are state law that says we have to tell, we have to use signage so that people know what they're getting into so we don't cause an accident. I've had multiple complaints about the speed that people drive on there. So I'm not saying it's something that needs to happen, I'm saying it's something that I think we ought to look into and...
You told me no because it wasn't a city street.
This is the main road. This is not North Bluff Circle, this is North Bluff Drive. So when it came up on North Bluff Circle, people on North Bluff Drive said, hey, we've been asking for speed bumps for years.
I never heard that one.
And I had not been aware of it, but I've since had people come to me and ask. And it seems to me that it's a main drag. If we have consistent speeding problems, there might be an opportunity there. We'd have to think about emergency vehicles, we'd certainly want to be talking to the community. But I guess I'm asking the council if there's appetite to talk to the community members along that road. I mean, Dean, you live on that road, I think you're the only one of us...
Well, I'll tell you one thing, it's a busy, busy road. And I think the same thing is true about DeBose Street here and Trussell Road and, I mean, it's not just on North Bluff, but North Bluff has a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
I don't do speed bumps for the answer.
You do or don't?
I do not.
I do not either. If I'm driving an ambulance or a fire truck, the last thing I need is a speed bump.
We got a policeman that'd take care of that.
With three handguns hopefully soon.
Yeah.
And giving warnings and they should start writing tickets.
So I'll go back to that community member and if they're interested in pushing it, I suggested that I would test the waters and then they can come here. Because I'm willing to listen to anybody who's got a suggestion about how to make the laws.
Well, if you do that, you're going to have speed bumps on every street.
That's right.
I mean, they follow me from Swanee coming to Mont Eagle and the minute you've got four lanes, game on.
Yeah.
I mean, they race. They race to Papa Ron's. And nine times out of ten, they're only going to CBS.
They're not going to have four lanes across the bridge so they can't do that.
Yeah.
That's not happening yet either.
All right, the next one I had on my list was in honor of trying to take some concerns that people have brought up and trying to fix them. I want to, that's the wrong one. Show me the right one. I'm going to bring it up here. Here we go. All right, this is our current code. So y'all know that we have had some conversations about developers and water line extensions and upgrade. And our current code says that persons desiring water in their sewer main extensions must pay for all the costs of making an extension. Well, what came up recently was a case where a developer wanted to put in several homes that exceeded the capacity of our lines. So it wasn't simply about extensions, it was about in order to provide this guy's development with water, we were going to have to upgrade our lines. And we didn't have any language to deal with that. So we do do a good job. We talk, we say that they must bear the cost and that they must install it and then we take it over. And then below, we also say, you know, we may decide it's in the town's best entrance to provide a variance to that, to pay for some upgrades, particularly if it's a large development that we're going to get a lot of revenue off of. But we don't, we don't say anything about when we have to do water line upgrades. And so I have, am thinking that that's going to be a problem. It has been a problem before and it will be a problem again. And so I worked on some language here that I wanted to, I've shared it with the council. But basically, we've got the current language. And then I drafted a change to it so that we can better deal with this when it comes up in the future. It basically says, persons desiring water and/or sewer main service must request a feasibility report from the town of Mont Eagle. That's already code. That's not changing anything, that's just saying what we always have asked them to do. Where that feasibility report indicates that no service is currently available or that the current service is insufficient to meet the demand expected at the new construction, the person desiring water and/or sewer service must pay all costs of making such extensions or improvements. All such extensions or improvements shall be installed. And then the language all stays the same. So basically, it's just clarifying language that I think can help us going forward being able to address the needs. And so I put that out there and asked that we consider an ordinance, a changing Title 18, Chapter 1, to reflect this new language.
So the second sentence is the only thing you really changed?
Well, I changed down below, anywhere where it said extension, I changed it to the word improvement so that it could be extension or upgrade.
Where does this feasibility report come from?
So that's what we have required through that capacity report.
Yeah. Submit a deposit and...
TDEC requires that if you're upgrading or extending a line. And that was the issue at Parker Street and it's also an issue now on Lane Avenue. But also based on history with the town, we are talking about the town providing the pipe and making the connections and the developer digging and installing the pipe. You've put that in the past.
That's all across the board or is that a specific place you're talking about?
No, that's all across the board as far as I'm concerned.
So is that a policy then, like this policy?
I think you'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the way our current ordinance states, it says that we have the right to do that with that variance language, to do that on a case-by-case basis.
Well, TDEC required it in both locations.
Well, TNOT required the upgrade.
Correct. TDEC required the upgrade, they didn't require how it happened.
No, right, they required the...
They would not approve existing plan for the extension.
And what was needed.
The upgrade didn't benefit the city.
No.
Well, it needed the upgrade, the water line's there.
Right, right.
So, you know, an extension means the same thing as putting in a water line or upgrading a water line to main because you can't use the old one.
Right.
And he says he's got to have four inch and there's only two inches. That's not my problem.
Well, and that's the way we interpreted, but it wasn't very clear. What I'm doing is just trying to make it more clear.
We tried to make it clear.
Well, this, I think, will make it more clear for the next person coming along to say, okay, it's very clear.
It'll never be clear enough. Trust me.
Nate, I don't disagree with this at all. What I would, what I would recommend is that you've got, like in the first sentence in both paragraphs there, you've got persons desiring water and/or sewer main service. Just to avoid confusion from a main line and an other line, I would take the word main out of there and just do sewer, water and/or sewer line or sewer service. Take main out of there. I don't want anybody to confuse it with like a forced main.
Can you turn around and show me?
Right here. Main and main.
Yeah, that's leftover from before.
Right here. And then the other thing too is in this first thing, if you're going to do, we say some such improvements, well, you have extensions or improvements, you changed it. Well, hang on, you're in the...
So I created an ordinance, so I'm trying to fix it in that. If y'all think this is worth doing, let's just do it and get it done with.
Well, okay. Yours is different than what I've got here then. Because you had such extensions. I was just going to add more improvements, but since you have improvements, you might want to put extensions on there too, just to make it all clear.
Yeah, what's an improvement? You know, I know what you're saying, but to the rest of the world, what's an improvement?
I would assume it's an upgrade.
Yeah, well, but an improvement, when you, when I'm living at home without running water and then I put running water in my house, the tax assessor calls that an improvement. So I was using the word improvement that way. Because otherwise, we have two ands, but I can, I can do it anyway. We say extensions and they're approval.
Yeah, that makes it consistent with what you got up in the other, in the top paragraph.
Okay.
Well, with all due respect, give me the draft copy and let me pass it on because I remember Dean asked me a question once, who wrote this? So I think somebody else should review it and make sure.
If we think so, I mean, it's fairly straightforward. I was hoping to avoid the legal fees just because it's not, in this instance, it's not, it's not rocket science.
No, it's not. But it's an ordinance that we're changing what I did. So what?
So do we want to, do we want to wait on this then? Anybody in the council have a...
Give me the draft copy, it's not going to be a big deal.
Okay, okay.
Because if it's needed or necessary, it doesn't contradict... All right.
They got to put six or eight.
Well, I do want to get this done before it comes back again. But if people want to wait until the legal council review it...
I don't see that legal has to, yeah, if so, it's impasse. That impasse, I mean...
So to somebody, it's just a while ago you asked who wrote this. I don't want problems that you're playing...
Put on a reading by name. I mean, that's all you, that's all you got to do. You've got to have two readings on it.
It'll take a reading.
You're not able to vote on anything on first reading.
Yeah, I was thinking we'd vote on it on first reading.
I make a motion that we vote on this, accepting this new language for the 10818 or whatever it was.
Eighteen, one oh eight.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Cool, I like when we act fast.
And then the manager will reflect that that was proposed by Nate Wilson?
Yes. And that was only a first reading?
And I will send it, I will send it to you, Debbie, digitally. You're going up to signing one because I didn't know how to do that.
We're just demanding it, aren't we?
Yeah, but it's a new ordinance.
A new ordinance.
All right, last thing on my list.
Well, do you all understand it's a new ordinance?
Yes.
I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it.
Last thing on my list, that town of Tracy City, or the Tracy City Public Utility Board is applying for a, an economic enhancement grant. And part of that grant, they want to look at the economics around forming a regional water authority, which would mean combining several of the water authorities into a larger regional thing. This is something that's been proposed as far back as 2016, but we've never before had the opportunity to have it reviewed by some, by financial accountants. And so in order to do that, we need to send a letter to the town of Tracy City saying that we support their grant and we're willing to share information with them to help make this consolidation analysis happen. So I drafted this letter on your behalf and I'd like for us to, I'd like a motion to ask the mayor to sign this, to put this on town letterhead, sign it and get it to the town of Tracy City. Doesn't obligate us to anything, it says we're interested in learning about regional water authority and we will help them in this grant.
Well, let me ask you this question right now. What do you mean use a portion of the grant?
So they qualify for a half million dollar grant, so they're looking at their unaccounted water loss, they're going to put up some section metering. So this is only a small portion of the grant.
They're going to do INI?
Not as part of this grant, they're looking at unaccounted water loss.
Oh, maybe they should do INI for our sake.
Is this more like a resolution? Is it basically, or what's the technical name of this document?
It's going to be a resolution, yeah. Asking for the mayor to sign this letter.
I still want an answer to my question. When are they going to do INI for our sake?
They just did a several million dollar INI project.
Where?
They did everything from the old high school to the pumping station at the elementary school. You're aware of that.
The only one I saw in action was the old, was the elementary school behind Sequatia Electric.
And I think it come across the highway from the old high school.
It went all the way from high school down, yeah.
From what I understand, and I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it either.
But that's a sewer issue and this is a water issue.
This is a, well, this is water and sewer, this is both of it.
If it says a portion of the grant, I want to know where the other portions going.
The other portion...
Well, we're not applying for the grant. The grant, they're applying to us. They're just saying they're taking a portion of their grant.
But they still need our letter and it's an analysis that we'll be using. And we're already doing stuff with Tracy City now.
No, it says the town of Mont Eagle supports the efforts of the Tracy City Public Utility Board to use a portion of the grant funds to study the economic impacts of a regional water authority that could collectively serve the water and sewer customers in our community.
Right.
So I...
Okay, let me ask this. Does the town of Mont Eagle have any financial burden?
No.
So we're not paying a dime for any of this?
No, we are asking them to look at our finances as part of a grant. If I'm understanding you correctly and you think that this letter would jeopardize their ability to get the grant, that is not true at all.
No, 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 no.
It does jeopardize their ability to do this with us being a part of it. And I think it makes sense for us to be a part of this.
I just want to make sure there's no financial burden.
Well, in doing so, we're agreeing to participate by providing information...
Correct.
As needed, meaning our customer information or our capacity at the sewer plant or capacity at the water plant or whatever utility-related information is.
Well, that's all public record.
And other customers and...
Yeah, what they want to do is they want to have a sit-down meeting with us and think about organizational structures so that when they do the theoretical analyses, they're talking about reality and not something that's off the wall.
I make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, do I need a real call? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, or resolution carries. The motion carries for the resolution. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right, then put that on letterhead and we'll sign that.
I'll send you the digital copy.
They're going to use our new letterhead?[1765.12]
The motion carries for the resolution. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Alright, then put that on letterhead, and we'll sign that.
I'll send you the digital copy.
They're gonna use our new letterhead?
Yeah, that's on generic. Oh, yeah, we're gonna get the new logo?
Yeah, I wanna man my motion that it didn't even send on our new letterhead.
No, the grants do October 1st, we gotta, we gotta get it in there.
Alright, let me just make one quick announcement. BZA committee is formed. I needed two members, Ty Burnett and Katie Trahan, have agreed to serve for the next year till the end of my term. So just so you know, the BZA members, Nate's on it, I'm on it, Jeff, DeeDee, Jeff O'Neil, DeeDee Clementson, Richard Black.
Is there a conflict in here? As my friend Nate Wilson would say about something I vote on, about planning commission members being on the BZA.
Not that I know of, I think it'd be a good liaison.
Looks to me like if you've got three or four planning commission members on the BZA, that you're, and the planning commission votes something down, what's the likelihood that the BZA is gonna grant it?
You have two on the planning commission.
So to Dean's point, is it a minority on the plan, on the BZA?
Yeah.
It's Katie, you-
And Richard and Richard.
And Richard, on a how many-person board?
Seven.
BZA is not seven?
Yes, it is. That's what I do in my spare time.
Maybe so, okay. So that is a minority, but yeah, it's a minority.
You know, it's kinda stacked in the deck, it's just not-
Well, I've had people look for volunteers, and no one has come forward. So this is what I need to complete the year. Next year, whoever the mayor is can form his own BZA, or her own BZA.
There's not that much council for the BZA either, is there?
We haven't met, probably a year.
Oh, no, they've met.
No, yeah, they met here a couple months ago, and then-
Oh, I wasn't there, I wasn't there. Sorry.
But the problem with that, I think, is that I would question, the minutes of the BZA is not approved until the next meeting. Looks to me like that's problematic.
Yeah, until another BZA matter comes up.
Well, but, but if they bow something down or approve it, technically, until the minutes are adopted, it's not legal, is it?